Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by rule policy that all council members are present at this time. We'd like to thank those that are with us tonight in the audience, as well as those who may be at home watching on City 56. We'd like to begin this evening with invocation of Ask Councilmember Hatch, if he'd lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Critten. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Our kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve the community of Cholo. We ask a blessing on all of the inhabitants of this wonderful community. We ask that thou be with us through this meeting, that we will make sound judgments on issues that come before us. We ask that thou will share your grace with us and bless us with rain through this fire season, and ask that the fires will be laid down and not harm our community or those around us. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to join together tonight, and we ask a blessing on those service personnel that are away from their families this evening. Watch over them and deliver them safely back to the arms of their loved ones. We say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people who live with us in this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item tonight is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on the agenda may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes, or can be yielded for additional time. This time, we have one person so far that's asked to speak, Steve Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, council members. It's nice to see you. Before I begin, I wanted to compliment Councilman Leach on his haircut. Morgan Brown, that looks good as well. I'm looking on the screen. The lighting makes me look bald, but in any event, that's not why I came.
I'm just jealous because I got a little bit more.
Looks good.
Really have the same barber.
It's not hard to be.
I'm fixing to do a comb over.
Steve Williams, Navajo Board of Supervisors. This council's aware, but there may be some that are viewing at home or here today that are not aware. I wanted to address Proposition 421 that will be on the ballot for Navajo County residents on August 27th. Early ballots are being mailed out on July 31st, I believe. It's a yes/no vote on the creation of a jail district, which is a secondary taxing district. You'll recall, over the last few years, the county's been systematically trimming its budget and expenditures. Recently, the Navajo Generating Station has announced their closing by the end of 2019. Troy is scheduled to close shortly thereafter in the next couple of years. That's going to be about a $2.5 million revenue loss annually to the county. In the last couple of years, we've cut about $2.5 million from the county budget. We've eliminated some programs in their entirety. We shut down the juvenile detention center. We closed the child support enforcement division of the county, and recently, we just closed the legal defenders office at the county, all due to revenue losses. Currently, the number of employees in 2008 that were, what 100 employees were doing in 2008, currently about 85 employees are doing at the county. And if the county needs to cut another $2.5 million, we're probably looking at 60 to 65 employees, doing what 100 employees did in 2008. I believe in lean government, but there comes a point that you can be too lean and not be able to provide services that the residents plan on. If the jail district passes, a yes vote, what that does is it creates a secondary taxing district. It's a third of a cent sales tax. It's tied to non-grocery items. Anyone that comes to the county, whether you live here or not, and they purchase goods or spent money here, they would contribute to it. It's not tied to a property tax. It's strictly a sales tax. So like I said, a third of a cent, if you buy a $3 cup of coffee, it would be a penny tax. If you spend $100, it would be a $3 tax on top of that. If, my goal is just to make sure people know what they're voting for, not to try to persuade them yes or no, but make sure they have the information. If the jail district passes, what happens?
Leave your three minutes. I'm gonna see if Vice Mayor will yield you another three minutes.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor. If the jail district passes, what happens is, by law, all of the tax monies that are raised through this jail district, they're required by law to go to pay for the maintenance of the jail. It is not to build a new jail. It's called a jail district simply because the money has to go to maintain the jail. What that does is it frees up $2.5 million that we anticipate the tax would bring in. It's a wash of what we're going to lose and what would come in. And that $2.5 million would be able to be distributed among other departments. So if we can't find a revenue replacement, every department's going to be impacted. You think about trying to get permits, building permits, or road maintenance, or you close on the sale of a house and you're trying to get documents recorded, or the school districts trying to get their paychecks out in a timely manner, or you're the victim of a crime and you're trying to have justice there, or you're charged with a crime. It hits every department in the county. And so the thought of a new tax doesn't excite me, but I think it's necessary in order to maintain the level of services that we're currently giving. So if you'd like to learn more information, you can go to the county website. You can also email me at steve.williams@navajocountyaz.gov. Be happy to have a conversation with it, and appreciate all that this city council does for the region and our partnership with the county. And I know you can ask questions on Call to the Public, so I'll just say thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else called to the public at this time? Seeing no one else moved, I'll close call to the public and come back to our next item is the consent calendar. Is there any items that need to be polled or discussed separately on the consent calendar? Not, I'll read those items. We have A is a consideration of approval of a declaration of surplus property for July 2019 auction. Consideration award of a purchase of a street sweeper. Consideration of award of a purchase of a crack sale machine. Consideration of award of purchase of an asphalt paving machine. Consideration of award of purchase of a sewer camera. Consideration of adoption of resolution R2019-24, designating the chief fiscal officer for City of Cholo an authorization to submit current fiscal year's annual expenditure limitation report. Consideration of resolution R2019-25, adopting uniform guidance policies and procedures for the federal grants award. Consideration of resolution 2019-21, approving an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Navajo County for the magistrate court city clerk. Consideration of resolution number 2019-22, approving amendment to intergovernmental agreement with Navajo County for court collections and criminal justice services. Then we have the consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting study session of June 18th, 2019, and the regular meeting of June 18th, 2019. We have a motion. We have a second by Councilmember Critten. Any other discussion? All for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is new business, consideration of applications submitted by Robert Gary Turnwall for a special event liquor license for the Battle of the Bands and food vans at Frontier Fields. Sam Reedhead.
Thank you, Mayor. Robert Gary Turnwall, representing Cholo Main Street, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the Battle of Vans and Food Vans at Frontier Fields, scheduled for August 31st. This event is sponsored by Cholo Main Street and will start at noon and end by 10:00 PM. Proceeds from the event will benefit Cholo Main Street and their project, beautify downtown Cholo. The license will allow Main Street to sell beer and wine during the event. Participants will enter and leave Frontier Fields through one entrance. An existing six-foot chain link fence surrounds the entire area. Alcohol will be sold in the area marked Beer Garden on the map provided with the application, and participants will be allowed to consume alcohol throughout the fields. However, participants will be strictly prohibited from entering the designated bounce house for kids, which will be surrounded by temporary fencing posted with no alcohol signs and access monitored by security personnel stationed at the entrance. Additional security personnel will be stationed at the main Frontier Fields entrance exit and at the entrance exit to the Beer Garden. In addition, they will patrol and monitor the fields to ensure no alcohol is brought in or leaves the premises, and that there is no underage consumption. Security will be provided by the Arizona Rangers. The Cholo Police Department performed a background check on the applicant and found nothing that would preclude approval of this special event liquor license. The application and action taken by the city council tonight will be forwarded to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. Unlike regular liquor licenses, the council's decision is final for this type of application. And Mr. Turnwall is available. Questions?
Thank you. Have any questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, this is the second showing of the Battle of the Bands and Food Vans, and if you went there last year, it was a great, great turnout for that, and so looking forward to another fine time that we can enjoy ourselves and have a good time and watch Jay beat the drums out there for us. If anybody else had anything, I'll make the motion.
Any other comments? Or a motion?
I move to approve the application submitted by Robert Gary Turnwall, a special event liquor license for Battle of the Bands and Food Vans on August 31st at Frontier Field.
Have a motion or second? Second by Councilmember Critten. Any other discussion? I'm just gonna say, if you're gonna open the whole thing up to alcohol, I don't know why, what effect you're gonna have by fencing off the bounce house. You know, I mean, the kids could go to the food trucks. They can go to the summer healthcare. They can go everywhere else where alcohol is served. Why can't they go, you know, alcohol in the bounce house? So, you know, it doesn't make sense to me on that, but I have other reasons why I'll probably oppose this, but that's fine. Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to, six to one. Thank you. Next item we have is item 7B, is a consideration award of professional services contract for the airport consulting services. Mr. Barr?
Yes. Good evening, council members and mayor. In February 2019, request for qualifications was published to solicit statements of qualifications from airport consulting firms. The airport consultant is hired to provide operations, engineering, design, and airport construction management per Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, and Arizona Department of Transportation Standards. The selection process followed the processes outlined by FAA and Arizona revised statutes, Title 34. Four states and statements of qualifications were received, and the selection committee individually reviewed and rated them. Of the four, three firms were selected for interviews. As a result of the interviews, Armstrong Consultants Incorporated was selected as the number one firm. After negotiations and subsequent approvals by the FAA, city staff is prepared to present the professional services contract to the city council for approval. Staff recommends the city council award the professional services contract for airport consulting services for Armstrong Consultants Incorporated. Open for any questions.
Any comments, your questions? Look for a motion. Councilmember Critten?
I move to award a professional services contract for airport consulting services to Armstrong Consulting, Inc., as specified in the attached City of Cholo contract for professional services.
Thank you. Motion. Second by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? All for the vote? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is consideration acceptance of a task order provided by professional service contract with Armstrong Consultants, Inc., for a South Apron reconstruction design. Mr. Barr?
Again, thank you. In February 2019, request for qualifications was published to solicit statements of qualifications, SOQs, from airport consulting firms to provide operations, engineering, design, and airport construction management per Federal Aviation and Arizona Department of Transportation Standards. The selection process followed the procedures outlined by the FAA and Arizona revised statutes, Title 34. So Qs were received and three firms were interviewed. Armstrong Consultants was selected as the number one firm. The city has a one-year on-call agreement with yearly extensions up to five years with Armstrong Consultants, which includes the South Apron Reconstruction Project. The South Apron and adjoining tax that we bravo are in failed condition. The project is supported by the FAA at 95% for $122,240, with the total project cost estimated at $128,674. The ADOT and the city will each pay 2.5% or $3,217 of the project cost. Staff recommends the city council approve Task Order A with Armstrong Consultants in an amount not to exceed $128,674, with the city's cost shared not to exceed $3,217 for the South Apron Reconstruction Design at the Cholo Regional Airport.
Is there any discussion? Look for a motion. Councilmember Critten?
I move to approve Task Order A as part of the professional services contract with Armstrong Consulting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $128,674, with the city cost shared not to exceed $3,217 for the South Apron Reconstruction Design at Cholo Regional Airport.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? All for the vote. All of them in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Just keep getting a lot of these things done at this price. That's a good deal.
Yeah, that's a good roll over for our dollar right there.
Pretty good deal.
Next item is consideration of award of a construction contract for State Route 260 and Evergreen Turn Lane, City of Cholo Project Number R2319. Mr. Hymasaw?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mine's a little more expensive, but not too much. At its February 5th, 2019, meeting, the city council entered into a development agreement with Steve Chilipsa of NEAZ SL Investment Company LLC. He's the current developer of the Culvers Restaurant Project. Has a condition of the approved conditional use permit with the Planning and Zoning Commission. The contractor is to construct a right turn lane off Evergreen Lane, turning onto State Route 260, or White Mountain Boulevard, or White Mountain Road, excuse me, if required by Arizona Department of Transportation or the city. After a meeting with Mr. Chilipsa, city staff and ADOT representatives, the group determined that a right turn lane on Evergreen and a deceleration lane off State Route 260 onto Evergreen Lane was necessary to safeguard the traveling public. These additions would allow safer access to State Route 260 for the residences and businesses located off Evergreen Lane, a city street. The approved development agreement states that the city will construct the deceleration lane off State Route 260 onto Evergreen Lane, since it would benefit those businesses and residents in the area. And Mr. Chilipsa would install a right turn lane on Evergreen Lane onto State Route 260 as agreed and required by the CUP. Scope of work includes installing a curb gutter and sidewalk, along with a right deceleration lane on State Route 260 entering Evergreen Lane. Project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of $62,000. Project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Western grade LLC at $69,252.79, McCullough Construction at $80,035.0, and Rollins Specialty Contract at $10285.0. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the State Route 260 and Evergreen Turn Lane, City of Cholo Project R2319, to Western Grade LLC, in that amount not to exceed the $69,252.79. The bid tabulation is attached, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Leach?
I don't know if you can answer this one or not, James, but I know it's a right turn lane only. What's gonna force people? We're getting too many of these right turn only, but everybody goes left. Are we gonna put something in there that forces them to not be able to turn left?
This one remains left and right turn. So the contractor, if you can see the exhibit there with the two colors, the blue is what the contractor is building, the right turn lane that is on Evergreen Lane. So that's adding a whole additional lane. So there will be three lanes at that intersection.
Also, right now, you can turn left?
Yep. So there'll be an entrance onto Evergreen heading eastbound. There will be a left only coming out of Evergreen and a right only coming out of Evergreen. So there will remain a left turn emotion allowed off Evergreen Lane.
That's just, I drove in there to see the dirtwork, and it's kinda eternal. I wouldn't turn left there. The trees right there that are getting bigger and bigger and bigger are gonna make it really tough right there to turn left. Is that?
Actually, some of those are coming out with our turn lane project. We're doing, the city's building the red one, which is the right turn on the highway. And actually, we've noticed that with the signal at the hospital bill, we're seeing more breaks in traffic. So it is making that left turn lane, I believe, safer coming out of Evergreen.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Any other comments, questions? Look for a motion. Councilmember Leach?
I move to award the construction contract for SR260 and Evergreen Turn Lane, City of Cholo, Parcel Number R2319 to Western Grade LLC, in the amount not to exceed $69,252.79.
Yeah, motions or second? Councilmember Kukavas, just correct that from parcel project. All of them in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hymasaw.
What did you say?
Next, next item is item number.
Project number.
The consideration resolution R2019 establishing a streetlight improvement district secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 2020. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This is the last piece of our fiscal year 2020 budget, so you won't have to hear me talk about budget again until January. Yeah.
Because it's our last.
So I can't deny it later.
So don't come to us in December, then.
Okay, I won't.
Yeah, no changes.
I can't control what Mrs. Billby will do, but I won't.
He's probably got it.
The fiscal officer of the city.
He's probably working on it now.
Fiscal officer, but not the chief budget officer, maybe. That's it. On June 18th, 2019, the mayor and council held a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 final budget and the secondary tax levy contained in this action. Property taxes collected within the streetlight improvement district are utilized to pay utility costs of the street and park lights within the district. Based on the current assessed valuations, the proposed tax levy of $235,000 will remain unchanged at 14.01 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. At this rate, a home with an assessed value of $150,000 will pay $17.86 annual. Staff recommends adopting resolution number R2019-23, establishing the streetlight improvement district secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 2020 at $235,000. Available for any questions?
How much increase is this over the previous year?
It's been unchanged. This will be the fourth year that it's stayed at 14.01.
Yeah. Councilmember Kelly?
I just would like you to share with the public and anybody else that may not understand, with costs going up, how can we leave the assessed evaluation the same?
So the assessed valuation is gonna go up, but the rate is not gonna go up. The value of your property may increase, but the rate's gonna stay the same.
Councilwoman Kukavas?
If nobody else has any comments, I'd like to move to adopt resolution R2019-23 establishing the streetlight improvement district secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 2020 at $235,000.
Thank you. Have a motion or second? Second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? All for the vote. All of them in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Glad we're done with you for the new year, man. Thank you. Item is summary of current events. Look, the council members on any current events that they'd like to hear. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, we talked about this earlier tonight, but the Battle of the Bands and Food Vans. This is a little brochure. It's out. There's, it looks like there's about two, like 12 bands that's gonna be playing. We have about 15 or 20 food vans out there. The date is August 31st, and it's a Saturday from 12 till 10:00 PM. And there's gonna be food, music, beer garden, shopping, outdoor games, and dog obstacle course. So if you would like to bring the family out and enjoy this, it's $5 entry fee for people up to 12 years, and the rest of them are free. So come on out, and it's at Frontier Field. Next, as I attended a meeting for Meals on Wheels, and just give some updates on that, is we have a local artist forium coming up. There's gonna be, that's gonna be August 2nd and 3rd, 9 o'clock to 4 o'clock at the Senior Center. We just got done doing another fundraiser with the barbecue, and so we're gonna be giving away a barbecue and a kitchen range at the next fair, craft fair that we have. That's gonna be in August. One thing we want to do is announce that Kettleman Steakhouse for this month of July is adopted charity, and they adopted Meals on Wheels. So anybody goes in there and buys food, dinner, or anything else, and pays cash, Meals on Wheels gets 5% of that cash value donated to them. So it'll be, it's a great thing that the Kettleman's is putting on for Meals on Wheels. We just like, if you can take advantage of that, please take advantage of that. And my last thing is, people around here knew Jack Latham as a council member here. He was on for four years or better. His wife has been diagnosed with major cancer, and she's down at Mayo Clinic right now getting some treatment. So please keep her in your prayers. And I wanted to thank my wife for 42 years of marriage just last week. So. She is a saint.
Congratulations. Great. Any other comments? I'm, I'm the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items to report. This Saturday, July 20th, is White Mountain Community's annual Firewise Block Party from 9:30 AM to 3:30 PM at Blue Ridge Elementary School on North Porter Mountain Road in Lakeside. It's a family event that includes information on suitable plants and the forested environment, creating defensible spaces, insects and diseases common to the White Mountains, evacuation preparedness. Plus, they'll have food and kids' activities. Also on Saturday, this Saturday, the library's hosting a NASA at My Library Event from 3:00 to 8:00 PM to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the moon landing. There will be activities for the whole family to enjoy, beginning with a show of First Man at 3:00. And then they'll have telescopes, telescopes available that evening to view the moon. And if you need more information on that, 532-470. The recreation staff's accepting applications through July 31st for the August 10th Try in the Pines, which includes a 625-yard swim, a 12.3-mile bike ride, and 3.5-mile run. It's open to ages 15 and older for $65. And youth 5 to 14 can participate for a youth, inner youth try for $45. And the number to call on that for more information is 532-4140. We have quite a few public works projects going on. Work on East McNeil Waterline is wrapping up. Work continues on the West Reedhead Waterline Project. That one's almost finished also. And slurry sealing of a number of the streets is underway. Working on the Fairway Park Phase IV Waterline improvements will begin next Monday. And as always, we appreciate the citizens' patience as we make improvements. And finally, the Lakeside Ranger District, it will be conducting with, if conditions permit, they're gonna conduct prescribed burns within the Morgan Tank Unit west of Cholo, about a mile south of State Route 260, and a half mile west of Bison Ridge and Torreon Developments. It's a prescribed burn, and it'll start tomorrow and continue through July 27th, or until the project is complete, and as the weather conditions would allow. It'll last several It'll last several days, and there'll be smoke in the area drainages, and it'll be visible from Sholo, Pine Top Lakeside, and Pine Town, Linden. So just wanted to make the citizens aware of that, that if the conditions permit, they will start that tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, summary of events, scheduling of meetings? Any meetings need to be aware of or scheduled? City manager?
Our, our normal meeting, the second meeting in August, would be August 20th. A number of the council members will be out of town at the League of Arizona and Cities and Towns Annual Conference. And that's August 20th is a Tuesday. We're proposing that we move that meeting, and we need to do it now in case we need to scheduling public hearings to the Monday evening prior, maybe Monday at 6:00 August 19th, if that works for the council.
Dean, you want to have it at 2:00 in the afternoon?
Me?
Yeah?
I'd rather have 6:00 than 2:00.
Okay.
Do it now.
If that works, we'll put it on our schedule.
6:00 on the 19th?
I'll make it work.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing no other business, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.